deliberations through telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio, or video conferencing, or any other technology that enables the public to clearly follow the proceedings of the public body in real time. In addition, all members of a public body may participate in a meeting remotely. The open meeting law's requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location is suspended. All of the provisions of the open meeting law, such as the requirements regarding hosting notice of meetings, and creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes, as well as the limited enumerated purposes for holding an executive session, remain in effect.
Thank you very much for that, Neil. I appreciate that. I will say, first, I'm on the agenda. I'm not sure. I don't have an agenda with me, and I don't have it copied.
Well, it's the approval of minutes of 1118 and 1202, both of which I have reviewed. I suggested some comments to 1118, which have been incorporated in the revised version, and I had no comments with respect to the 1202 minutes.
I would move to accept those minutes.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Nelson, aye.
Manzolini, aye.
Hanson, aye. The next item, please.
It's the Baldur Dash special permit amendment. And Danielle, I know you talked to our town attorney this afternoon. Can you give us a quick update?
Sure. So it seems as though that our attorney has been in conversation with Baldur Dash attorney. And so what we would like to do tonight is continue the special permit until our first meeting in January, and have the discussions then so that they can work out a potential draft notice of decision for discussion.
All right. I'd like to move that we continue our public hearing to the first select board meeting in January. Do we have a date on that, Danielle, at this point?
So I'm looking right now. I had proposed a couple of dates. We don't have a meeting the 23rd or the 30th, so we could continue with the first and third for January and switch back to the second and fourth for February. So you could have a meeting on the 6th.
All right, then. My motion would be to continue the public hearing on, at the meeting scheduled for, or the meeting that we will schedule for, Wednesday, January 6.
And then the one after that would be the 20th.
Okay, but for purposes of my motion...
For purposes of this discussion, it would be the 6th, yes.
Right, right.
I would just like to comment that the amended quote-unquote "decision" that's out and about the people when reviewing and commenting on, I want to make it clear to everybody that that was just a draft that was put together by a subset of the select board with our attorney. And I apologize that it went out to the world without draft splattered all over.
All right, well, that's certainly accurate in the sense that it was a draft, and it was the consideration by the board and frankly by those in the public who are interested in the proceeding.
Right.
My motion would require a second.
A second.
Okay, and if there's...
All in favor?
Well, let's, if there's any discussion, I just...
Well, I would like to have some discussion, which may help, and it may... But I just want to have this discussion, and it's related to this topic. Everybody that knows me knows that I hate signs and signage in general. However, I would like to propose, for discussion, and something that we can think about, is that the town of Richmond create a sign. And it's a sign that could be posted wherever we deem it appropriate to post it. And the sign would say something like this, and this is not necessarily the exact verbiage, but it's an idea. "Per the request by the town of Richmond, please refrain from creating unnecessary noise while visiting this property." And that's something that we could post, for example, at the state boat ramp, because we've had noise problems down there with early boaters and things like that. We could post it at the town beach, which generally gets to be a source of noise that some people may find irritating. We could post it at Hollow Fields, which has been very, very noisy, or we could ask that it be posted at Hollow Fields. We could post it at the town hall and library. We could ask that it be posted at Hilltop Orchards. We could ask that it be posted at Baldur Dash, for example. We could post it at the cemeteries. Those are areas where we've had noise types of complaints, and it's really, it's kind of hard to impose on those quote-unquote "individual" people responsible for those properties to do that. But we could help them by putting their burden onto our burden, saying the town of Richmond is requesting that you refrain from creating unnecessary noise while you're there. And if we had such a sign, then that's something that perhaps could be incorporated into a Baldur Dash restriction. Or a condition, I should say, not a restriction. And I would like to have that discussion and see if that is worth pursuing, or is this just another crazy Manzolini-go-get-lost idea?
Could I respectfully suggest that we defer that discussion until we just comment, or have any, if anybody has comments on the motion to continue the public hearing for our first meeting in January? In other words, I think what you're suggesting is something that goes well beyond what we are talking about here, and there are several people who have, I think probably, come to our meeting expecting to either get a resolution or hear more discussion about the Baldur Dash issues. And what we're basically saying is, with the attorneys for Baldur Dash and the attorney for the town in discussion about the terms of the proposed permit, Danielle has suggested, and I certainly agree, that it makes sense, since there's no immediate rush here, that we defer further discussion until January 6.
I agree with that aspect. I was just suggesting that...
There's been a motion made and seconded, and we have voted on that.
I just want to make sure that Christian is also on board with that continuation as the applicant.
I would like to continue it until 2021, please. Maybe 2022 if possible.
I'm afraid we're not going to be able to do that. All right. I understand your attorney is also, is comfortable with the continuance of the hearing.
Yes, I am comfortable with it.
Okay. Any other discussion, since I made the motion? All right, I moved. Can we vote on it now, Al?
I thought we had done it, but we can try voting again if you please.
Nelson, aye.
All in favor of moving the discussion to the assigned date of January 6, I believe? They signify by saying aye.
Nelson, aye. Manzolini, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Okay, now. Roger, you want to hold that for Selectment Matters, or do you want to talk about it now?
It's up to Al. That could be a Selectment Matter thing. It's something that we can discuss at the end.
All right, let's move on to the next item at this point.
It's the alcohol license pouring permits for Baldur Dash and Hilltop.
So the board has to vote to approve both of these licenses for their pouring license renewals. The only way to actually revoke these licenses is if either of them have legal violations against them, which they don't. So I'm asking you to approve the renewals so that we can send them back into the state by the end of December, end of December.
I moved that we approve them.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Moving right along, the next item on the agenda is green burials.
So I'd like to have more of a, I'd like to have more of a discussion on green burials at our next meeting, but before we do that, I just need some information from you guys. So what I did was I spoke with Great Barrington to see what their plan is for green burials and what their requirements are. I had a copy of that that I would like to send to the three board members so they can see. But there are items that we need to see exactly how we want to do it if we want to talk to the funeral homes, which I think that we should do just so that we have more of an accurate cost increase that we would have to do on our bylaws in order to make it to the green burials can happen. So I would like to be able to look into that and then have Steve Parsons join us at the next meeting to explain everything else. And there are different types of green burials that you can decide. Learned a lot about green burials, actually. So you can require certain types of at least some sort of vault, if you wish, so that it's not just a body in the ground, so it actually still would be in a wooden vault or at least something. So all that is in the information that I'm going to send to the board, but I just need to know if you guys are okay with me going to the funeral homes to get more information and have more of a conversation with Steve Parsons before I bring you suggestions.
I like the idea of getting additional information with respect to any cost differential up or down for a green burial. I also would like to know what the, if there's any state requirements associated with green burial with respect to distances to private wells and/or watershed areas or conservation, or water, water.
So currently, there's not. The time where it starts to get concerning is if somebody has a green burial and they went through all the chemical treatments of their bodies. I don't know how many people are going to go through that process and then have a green burial. I don't know. But you could always put restrictions in there so that they would have to have at least some sort of vault if they had a plan to actually have chemicals.
What I, what I don't want to do is go ahead and approve something only to find out that we violated some state requirement.
Oh, yeah. We all agree with that.
I want to do whatever we need to do to make sure that we're in compliance with state regulations.
Let me just point out, since I've done a little research myself. First of all, in terms of increased costs, as far as I know, it is, there are no increased costs as far as the funeral home is concerned. There's no metal or casket.
So I have actually been told that the funeral homes are saying that there is an added cost. Great Barrington has said that as well, so I would like to reach out to them, too.
I'd be surprised if there were, why they would charge for a wooden box and a burial usually within 24 hours of death. So it's hard to imagine that there would be, that would be more costly than the normal casket, vault, grave. But I'm certainly interested to find that out. Secondly, I understand that we can require a separate area of the cemetery for green burials, that that would not be inconsistent with some of the practice of other towns. As far as the other issues, I think finding out what the other towns are doing, and of course, having a conversation with the funeral homes makes sense. There is no, again, here, there's no immediate rush, but I would point out that under some religious practice, it is almost, it is a customary form of burial. And I would not want our cemetery made unavailable to certain members of our community if we were to take a position that would unduly limit or restrict green burial activity. But I think it's best that we wait to get all the information that we can get before we make a decision.
Okay, I would move to postpone the discussion, or the discussion on green barrels until January 6.
Well, I certainly, I support that. I'll second that as a motion.
Roger, you're muted. Hanson, aye.
Nelson, aye. Roger, you're muted.
I just unmuted. I just want to make sure that when we invite Steve, that he realizes that we're going to ask him about what he thinks the cost differential is going to be from a maintenance perspective.
I don't think there's any.
He should have, we're not going to ask him at that. We should ask him ahead of time so that he knows when he gets there what his position is.
Yes, he is aware, and that was part of why he was going to talk to the board again. And he thought that was part of the reason that we hadn't made any decisions in the last, actually, he said five years ago was the last conversation, so.
Okay, so you have a Manzolini aye vote now. So that's, everybody voted.
Right. Next item, Al, are public comments?
Assistant, with their hand raised. Was it Mr. Kenny? You can unmute. I, okay, good.
I'm here. I had trouble logging in, so I think I may have missed the discussion about the Baldur Dash special permit amendment. I live, I don't live in Richmond Shores. I live in Colonial Acres, which is kind of up the hill. But I did want to say that when the weather was nice, we loved to work outside in our garden and hang out in the yard. And there were days when the music was very loud and very constant. And, you know, it got to the point where you didn't feel like you wanted to stay outside working and/or enjoying the outdoors. I do have some neighbors who stay inside their house all day, or some wear headphones.
Excuse me, Mr. Kenny? So we've actually, we've actually postponed the discussion of this, and we have said that need, so that the, both attorneys are not here either to have a full discussion, so we're not actually discussing the special permit on Baldur Dash tonight.
Continue to the 6th.
Yes, it's been postponed to the 6th of January.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. I'm sorry to jump in and...
That's quite all right.
Wait till the 6th.
If you could, sir, we could take your comment now, but if you want to wait until the 6th, we'll have more information for you.
All right.
Yeah, let's, I'll do it when it's the right time.
All right, thank you.
I'll put it in my calendar.
Thank you. 6 o'clock on the 6th. Is there any other public comment from people who are attending the meeting?
Hearing none, let's move on to the next item.
Next item is our town administrators' report.
I don't have much to report right now, except for we are holding our hazard mitigation webinars. Neil, you have been present for two of them. They're going fairly well. The next one is tomorrow from 9:00 to 11:00. So hopefully, people still have power so that we can still do that webinar. And then we're going to move the plan forward, get a little more cohesive conversation, and then have some more public comments so we can have our plan updated and approved. We do have a survey and a short video that we are asking town residents to participate in. You can find that on our website under latest news, as well as on our Facebook page. The other item is that the Dublin Road culvert is moving forward. We had a site visit on Monday with the neighbors to get signatures so that we could put the application forward to the conservation commission. The hopeful plan right now is to have us on the January 11th agenda for CONCOM so that we can go out to bid in February, and then start the project after going out to bid in the spring. And the whole road would be closed for three months. Then hopefully, that will be done, and that is no cost to the town. That is being done under our small bridge grant that we received.
The only thing that surprises me is that you're talking about closing Dublin Road for three months?
Yep.
Is there any way to close it and create just a one-way traffic at that culvert?
No, not with the, nope, not with the type of culvert we have. The neighbors are aware. Steve Traver is aware. It is the only way that we can get the bridge done in budget and in the timeframe.
Wow, because that's, if you're traveling, residents, well, we'll have to put signs up at Route 20.
Yep, we have a whole big plan. The engineers have a whole big sign detour plan.
Okay.
That is part of their application process.
I didn't realize that we had to do that. I'm surprised.
Is this going to be initiated very soon?
That was in the beginning of conversations. I'm sorry, Al.
Is this going to be initiated very soon?
No.
Not till the spring, no.
Okay, that was...
In the, in the beginning stages of the conversation, when we started the grant, we had this conversation, and it was noted that it had to have a detour. It was going to be closed.
Okay, I didn't remember that. Anything else, Danielle?
No, that's it for my report.
Okay, are there any Selectment Matters? I believe that's the next item would be Selectments Matters?
That's correct.
Roger, do you have anything, any matters?
Well, there's two things I want to discuss. One is that my signed proposal. The other is, is the, we granted Hollow Fields a temporary parking lot expansion to the end of the year. And I just want to know if there's any action that they're going to take to remove that temporary extension at the end of the year.
On that subject, let me suggest that we continue the exemption rather than remove it. In other words, it turns out, I can see from my house, the Hollow Fields parking area. I need binoculars, but I have a clear look across the valley. And since we agreed on the temporary expansion, I have not seen an overflow situation at the lot. I may have missed it. I don't check it every week, every day. But it would appear that with the added parking, I think we probably allow about six or seven more cars than originally. I would say the maximum is probably between 12 and 14 now with the added parking, but limited to the 50-foot setback from Mr. Caligari's property. It would appear that the parking area on occasion has been, I would say, 10 to 11 cars, but I have not seen any cars parked on Perry's Peak Road.
I have this question. Does BNRC plow that parking lot? Does anybody plow that parking lot?
I have no, I don't know. We don't.
Because if they don't, then maybe cars parked on the road again because of the cross-country skiers or whomever likes winter sports.
Well, that would be a question to BNRC. Did they plow it last year? I don't know.
I can answer that question. This is Jeff Morse. Dave Donald plows that parking lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Now we know.
Yeah, and I had a conversation with him last week about that, and he said, "If BNRC tells me to plow that expanded parking lot, I'll do it." So he's, he's working for them. I don't think there's going to be a need to park, to plow that. My observation is this: When hunting season started, the number of people who came up here to park dropped dramatically, and it's, it does overflow into that overflow parking lot, but only because it's available. If it was reduced back to its original size, you could still fit all the cars that want to come up here, and nobody's parked in the road.
All right, well, my feeling is that the additional spaces, and Jeff, I don't live on Perry's Peak Road, but from my observation, the additional spaces are not that intrusive or that disruptive that does relieve the need to park on the road. And it seemed to me in the weeks before the hunting season that that was a reasonable way of resolving the issue, at least for the balance of this year. Going forward to next year, my suggestion is we keep it as it currently is with space for approximately 12 cars, and see how it goes when people begin to use the Hollow Fields facility again, probably March, April, May.
I would make a suggestion, too, on that. I think we may already do that. We'd be to close that road during mud season. We do other roads that way because they're impassable at times because of the mud. So it might be a good idea to close the Perry's Peak Road, just to keep the traffic off the road.
That's already a given now. We, that's, we, that's a given. That's the plan.
All right, good.
Well, if you close it, you do say for residents only or something like that. And, you know, we can see how that goes for the month of March or early April.
Yeah, it was closed several times last year, and there really weren't that many problems with it.
Yeah.
But I would, and I think all the residents up here would prefer that you stick to what you agreed to at the last meeting, which was to not allow them to expand their parking lot past the first of the year.
Well, I just think we'll be, we'll be talking about this again, and if we do allow, Jeff, I mean, what is the difference between what it was and what it has been for the last several months? I mean, is there a difference between having six or eight cars jammed into the space or having 12 cars maximum in the space? I just think it...
Yeah, well, I don't think during the winter, you're going to, we're going to run into a problem with 14 cars.
I'm sorry, I didn't express myself. I mean, looking ahead to next summer, next season, I'm suggesting we consider keeping the space at the current size, which is larger than the original, but not as large as the space that was, that was at first delivered or constructed.
Right. I'm speaking for the residents up here who I've been in contact with, and our preference would be to wait until BNRC applies for a permit to expand their parking lot and have that discussion at that point, not now.
That's fair. I understand that. Sure, okay. I agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, Roger, anymore? Roger, anymore?
Well, the other thing was this signed proposal, just as a, a... another tool we can have in our toolbox to be used in different places where noise has been a problem. And I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily think that signage solves problems, but at least it shows people that you're concerned about the noise and you're asking people to try to not make noise in the locations we so choose.
Okay. Would you, what is the text that you were considering again, Roger?
I was, I was recommending this text. "Per request by the town of Richmond, please refrain from creating unnecessary noise while visiting this property." And I was thinking we could do that at the boat ramp, at the town beach, the town hall and the library, our cemeteries, because there's, you shouldn't have to do that at the cemeteries, but there has been noise at the cemeteries during burial ceremonies, which has been totally inappropriate. And we could post that at Hollow, we could ask that it be posted at Hollow Field because people that go there are not necessarily the quietest bunch. You would think that, that they would be, but they're not. Town Hall, Library, we could request at Hilltop Orchard do such a posting and we could put it, we could ask Baldur Dash to post such a sign. I mean, we could provide the sign. It could be a town sign that we provide to these different places.
Any more, Roger?
No, that's it. And that was just, it's just, it's just something that I want you to think about and see if we might want to create such a sign or such a tool.
Okay, understood that there's really no effective enforcement of that. There's no bylaw or ordinance. It's just a request.
It's just like a speed limit sign. It's totally useless.
Okay. Neil, do you have any, any issues?
With Roger's proposal? No.
No, I mean, do you have any selectmen matters yourself?
No, no, I do not.
And I guess I'm, I have none myself, so I guess we can move on to.
Well, there's not a selectmen's matter, but just is a, we had a first, a dry run of the presentation for the community center, Town Hall, Library, Community Center. And it went sort of, sort of okay. There were some kinks that we can work out and will work out. But the first real presentation is this Saturday at 10 o'clock, I believe, and it's open to the public.
Is this a Zoom meeting or in person?
It's a Zoom meeting. Everything is Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay.
Our whole life is Zoom, Al.
Yeah. Well, it's a good point, Roger, and I would certainly urge members of the public who are with us tonight to, to attend the Saturday presentation. I would also point out it's gonna be presented, I think, on five additional dates in, in 2021, January and February, so it's not critical that you attend on Saturday, but we are hoping that a large aggregate number of Richmond residents takes advantage of the opportunity to learn about what I think is the most exciting proposal that I've seen. And I'm only here 22 years. You guys have been here a lot longer, but I think this is an exciting opportunity for the town. And I would hope the public, members of the public do take advantage of the presentation and see what they're talking about.
And it, the plan is to have the same presentation on those five dates. And it'll probably be refined ever so slightly as we go through the presentations because it might, you know, there'll be some things that we get better at or learn. But the, it culminates in basically asking the town to support or the townspeople to support the article that will be in the May 2021 town meeting, requesting a bond request to fund, to fund this project. And also to support a fundraising effort that will be underway by that time.
Danielle, are we going to put the presentation on the town website as well? Access to it?
Yes, as long as I get a copy from Megan, we can do that.
Yeah.
That, that's the plan. And the plan is as we, as time evolves here, we also plan to have a larger set of drawings from the designer, CNC, not a chickpea, the architect that's, that we can have laid out somewheres, either at the library or at the town hall, wherever the public is allowed to, to view it as, as we get into the spring. So that's the plan. I just wanted to let you know that that's happening for those of you that didn't know it's happening.
Are there any other comments or matters to be discussed?
I think Holly has something.
Okay, Holly.
Yes, I would just like to know what part of Dublin Road is, where this culvert is and what part of Dublin Road is gonna be closed.
It's north of 41.
It's down by Craig Swinson's house.
Okay. So it'll just be that section.
North of East Slope?
Northern section of Dublin Road, right?
Correct.
Right.
Between 20 and 41.
Thank you.
Basically at the Hancock line.
Kelly wants to ask something.
There was some confusion about whether tonight's meeting was at 6:00 PM or at 7:00 PM. Could you clarify when the meeting is gonna be on January 6th? I heard 6:00, but this one was at 7:00.
January 6th, 6:00 PM.
At 6:00, so it was posted for 7:00 in all the correct places. It's, the reason it didn't go at 6:00 was my fault.
Well, and, and everybody, including the Berkshire Eagle, knew that it was at 7:00 tonight, although it didn't say that in that particular paper.
That's true.
Yeah, this, this was a one-time only at 7:00. We normally meet at 6:00 and we apologize if.
So, sorry, sorry, Clarence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I, and I don't know, you know, Eagle made an error, which, you know, I know.
They never do, but this was.
It was, it was their first error in Michigan.
Okay, continuing on. Is there any other? Seeing that and hearing that, I would move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
I'm in favor of it.
All right.
Billson, aye. Aye.
All right, good night, everyone. Make sure you have your shovel by your front door.
That's right. To wake up tomorrow to a white scenario, that's for sure.
That could happen, looks likely. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Are you still there?
Hi.
Who's asking?
Ron, who are you looking for? I just want to say something to Alan real quick.
He's there.
Al's here.
Alan, we lined up Brian, so thank you.
Oh, good, good. That worked out.
You just stopped by a few minutes ago.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, good night.